...work, so we're not getting a, I'm sure they would take whatever we...
When was that done?
It was done three years ago, so...
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Councilor Murray.
On Franklin Farm here, I believe too that they're able to get some different grant money. Is that correct in running that operation?
They've been successful. I think the town has potted in and tried to bring some resources into Franklin Farm. They always need more, but there is some grant money that has been appropriated and that was that this $2,000 actually was on the heels of about a $68,000 grant that came in, but there was a need for a contribution, you know, match of some sort, and that's what they stepped forward and did.
Yeah.
So those things are happening, and I think that the, that association is, continues to work to try to make improvements to the farm.
And I say that because I know that, I had a conversation with the planning, Josh, in the planning, and that he's working on a couple of others right now to help them, you know, out in securing more money for the operation there, so...
Continuing to do whatever we can to bring outside money to help the town.
I know, they're very pleased with it. One other, going back to the traffic calming, I might add that, and I've seen an increase in District Five, maybe because of the way it's set up, but I've asked the police chief on a number of occasions for studies when I have constituents that come to me, and there seems to be more lately, I don't know how the other council people feel, that they're talking about, and we have to go in and do that. We've been trying to avoid the speed bumps because they're a nuisance, but we have put up a couple of stop signs to help, and I think it's very important, and I just see an increase over the last year.
Is there a speed bump on New Clark Road?
There is, no. Hero Boulevard, there's a couple.
There should be.
Well, we, there's a few places we like to put speed bumps, but they won't, K Street, there's people...
People don't like them. They damage cars because of the...
There's a plan in the, in the police department that really have applications and where communities want, or neighborhoods or streets where the majority want some level of implementation, we review that and there's a traffic count that you need to have to reach that level, there's, so there's criteria, but I can tell you that where it has been implemented and has reduced speed in those neighborhoods by upwards of 25 percent, and it has reduced traffic flow in those communities in about a 30 percent range. So it's a very successful program, and the communities that want us, want to see that type of reduction in speed and reduction in traffic, if it fits the criteria, they can request that, and those who don't want to have it in their neighborhood because they see it as some sort of an inconvenience, then they just don't have to request that. So it's a voluntary program that we're, that's available to the residents.
Representative McLaughlin, I see your light is on. Come up. No, you gotta come up. You know that. We don't have a microphone at here, though.
Mr. President, members of the council, just a couple of points I'd like to reiterate. I have reiterated them before. We're talking about stop signs, you know, stuff like that. Stop signs in this town are a mess. Have you driven through Hillside, the Bryant Street?
What is, what are they?
They've all, they've all been vandalized, spray painted.
You have a lot of stop signs up that don't have ordinances?
Bear Hill Road, go down, they've all been spray painted. These need to be cleaned up.
The stowaway isn't here, so...
Well, you know, I'd like to see more money allocated for that, and also on the Franklin Farms. I think the issue three years ago was there was a $70,000 grant put forth. All right? The town's matching fund was $20,000. At that time, they couldn't, couldn't afford it, but the people took it upon themselves to fund that.
Yes, and we funded at $5,000 a year over a period of time.
It was payback, which is great. I'd like to see, you know, an effort put forth to further get money for Franklin Farms.
Okay, thank you.
With that said, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on other expenditures? The next item is the school department. Oh, there's a ghost from the past in the back there. Mr. Thibodeau, nice to see you. No, you have to come up, Mr. Thibodeau. I haven't seen you in ages.
How you been, Jim?
Good.
School capital purchases, what is that? Is that the computers?
That is Chromebooks and textbooks.
Can I ask how that's gonna work? Are the students gonna take those computers home?
Well, we'll, we'll get into that when the school department comes up.
So I could, I'll have time to speak about that when it's explained?
Yeah. We don't have control over that part. We only have control over the purchase. So that would answer, would have to come from the school.
Why is that line there and not in the technology department?
Because it's for the school department. Technology department is a town-run department.
Mr. President, I think he was asking if he could speak after the school department, which we have a public comment...
Of course.
Yeah, we have a public comments section after that.
I just want to speak on that once I hear about how it's gonna be used.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, the school department budget is currently at fifty-five, I'm sorry, $57,362,346, and it's proposed to be at $54,000, I'm sorry, million, I wish it was $54,000. That is, consists of the proposed town contribution of $39,857.82, up from $38,695.73, and other contributions of $18,897,628, slightly up from $18,671.733. Does anyone wish to speak on the school department? Dr. Thornton first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, please. Tonight, we have some information on our budget. I will start the presentation. Dr. Masterson will add his insight as a middle school principal, and I'd like to wrap it up with Chipper Simboli with some remarks, if we could. First, I'd like to correct some misinformation that's out there. It's been recently stated in the Valley Breeze that the BEP school budget request came in on two pages with no details, and our budget was seat-of-your-pants budgeting. This is simply not accurate. I am holding in my hand...
Where was that? I don't recall that.
I'm simply, I'm holding in my hand a copy of the budget sent to the town hall. This is the only budget sent, the BEP budget, bold elements inside the budget book. We also did, as a courtesy, send along a brief summary, which I believe the mayor has referred to. Now, at your places, I gave you some handouts, you don't have to look also up there. In Slide One, you have a handout that I think puts the whole budget conversation on the perspective. Here, you have on the bottom Mayor McKee's budget, as you can see by the numbers, it's giving one point, I'm sorry, $1,289 to the charter schools next year, and $83 per student for the Cumberland Public Schools. On top, if you look up top there, consider that the budget submitted on behalf of the students, our budget, would result in the same $1,289 per student for the charters and $833 for the Cumberland Public Schools. So I think that's a really telling slide as far as breaking it out.
You refer to that as Mayor McKee's budget, the $1,289.
The bottom one is the current budget you have right now before you. That's what happened right now if you approved that.
Which one, which number are you talking about?
This.
No, you referred to the charter school payments as Mayor McKee's budget.
The current budget in front of you, that's how...
That's your budget, isn't it?
That's how it shakes out.
That's your budget, though.
It's the mayor's budget now. What I'm telling you is, if you approve the budget right now, it'll be that breakout. $1,289 per student for the charters, $83 for the students at Cumberland Public School. If I could continue, Mike, next slide. Some people had asked me the question, could we take back the charter school students in the district? If so, what would that look like? Well, tonight, I have the answer for you. We did the math on that. Currently, K8, we have 286 students in all the charters. Taking where they live in Cumberland, we modeled placing them back in the corresponding school and grade level. As you can see here, the results show we could absorb the students back. Ashton, 26 more students. Cumberland Hill, 22. Community, 34. Garvin, 45. T.F. Newton, 84. Total of 211 for the else. The two middles, 33 and 42 respectively, total of 286. In terms of costs, we would add two K5 teachers, two middle school teachers, supplies, transportation, two buses, and purchase services, approximately $400,000. The current cost right now is $2 million, so we would be saving $1.6 million if we took them back. So I just wanted to answer that question. I've been asked that several times in the past few months, so there's the answer. It's a savings of $1.6 million if they came back. I do also want to clarify one last point regarding state assessment scores and the comparison of BVP and Cumberland Schools. I think also that's part of the conversation with the budget and the 100K you're talking about. At your places, you have data. It's an apples-to-apples comparison between our two school districts and the districts in all of Rhode Island. This is a comparison of all students less the special education subgroup, so it's an apples-to-apples comparison. If you look at the first slide, this is Reading. You can see Cumberland collapsing all the scores down in Reading, grades three through eight. Ninety-one percent of the students are proficient, and BVP's right here, 84, so both schools are doing well. Next slide, Mike, if you could, is the math slide. You can see both schools again, BVP, 83, and Cumberland, 83. So I just want you to have information out there, because sometimes I think it's a little misleading what's presented with state test scores. You can see both school districts do well, but Cumberland Public certainly doing as well as the charters. We are making a difference in Cumberland. The state's highest ranking educational official, Deborah Gist, recently said Cumberland's one of five districts making significant progress in both ELA and math. The Province Journal last week, I think May 22nd, had article on Rhode Island, and if you read that, it said Cumberland has become a well-regarded school system.
A what?
A well-regarded school system, and that's the reason folks are moving here. That was in May 22nd, Province Journal. So in closing, I would just say the teachers and students have worked really hard in Cumberland. We have momentum. The children of this community deserve the same educational opportunities as students in other cities and towns. Our community has told us on a recent survey we did that they value a high-quality education, a school system that will prepare our students to compete on a global level, and they demand we provide students with a proper training coursework. So councilors, we need your support now more than ever. That's why I'm asking you to truly consider fully funding our schools. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Masterson for some remarks from his perspective at the middle level, if I could.
Any questions to Dr. Thornton?
I do.
Mindly answering some questions?
I can answer now, we're at the end.
Who do you prefer?
A curve one now, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Sure.
Relative to the budget and which version we have, because I, the budget I was supplied last week at the finance committee meeting, handed to us by Mr. Bragano, doesn't have the BEP line in it, and for $4 million, it's not in here. It's in the one that's on the website that I printed, but it's not in this one that I was just handed last week. So I... The budget that you have is the budget that's before you. It's actually the mayor's budget of $1,547,900, appropriation of $600,000.
It's in there.
Fund balance.
Yeah.
The budget we have before... That budget.
That's the mayor's budget.
Right, that's the $1,547.
This is the mayor's budget? It says Cumberland School of Farm.
No, I know, but it's in line with what you have been submitted to.
What is, what?
Which, how budget's included here.
Do we have the budget that, you can't, we can't hear you, Alex, let me come up. Have we, or do we have the budget that quote-unquote was submitted but not voted on? With the $4 million. You have that, the extra $4 million?
It's on the website at the school department, but it's not the one that we were provided last week.
No, that budget was, that budget was submitted to the finance director, you know, on the day it was due, and the budget, the school department budget that was included in the mayor's budget did not include the $4.3 million of funding and included the $1,500, funded in two different ways, part of it through town appropriation, part of it by use of fund balance that you keep bringing up. So that's the budget that is actually before you from the mayor's, from the mayor's office, and the budget that we figured we would discuss with you. We have also the $4.3 million budget, which people have seen on the website, we've had copies of, and if there's an interest in talking about that budget, well, we're very happy to talk about that budget.
What I'm trying to get at is, and I think what we're all trying to get is, which budget do you want us to discuss? The one with the $4.3?
I would welcome a discussion of the full budget we submit. I would welcome that.
But I thought this was a discussion of the mayor's submitted budget to you.
We can, we can certainly solidify that if the president states that.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to clarify. Last week, I was provided one version, and I went to your website and got another version. I'm just trying to understand which budget you're looking to get support for and what those expenses truly entail in detail.
Well, I think, I think we want the support on the budget that funds the BEP that we've talked about a number of times at joint meetings or whatever, the $4.3 million increase, but that's not the budget that the finance director and mayor submitted to you. They submitted the budget that was the four percent, excuse me, the four percent increase, and they funded the four percent in two different ways, part fund balance, part town appropriation. So we thought that was the budget we were here to discuss because that's the budget before you through the mayor's office. We don't have a right to send you a budget directly. Our budget's submitted to the mayor's office and then the mayor submitted to you.
So you're getting an increase of how much in the mayor's budget, Alex?
Eight ninety-six, I believe.
What, 1.96?
I believe it's 8.96 on the revenue side.
On the town appropriation, and...
Six fifteen and change.
Six fifty-one roughly, and use of fund balance.
And how much do you want in addition to the 1.5 million?
Well, there are two, we'd want the, we'd want an additional...
Actually, we gave you more money than the mayor recommended. I'm not sure why, we're not discussing it.
We, we, the budget that fully funded, or didn't fully fund, but funded substantially the BE portion, the BEP portion of the budget that the school committee sent to the...
Which is an additional...
It was about, it'd be, it'd be $4.3 million instead of $1.5.
That's what you want us to consider.
Well, that budget's not before you because the mayor didn't include that in submission.
We amend the mayor's budget, Alex.
Right, okay.
We understand, this is all not foreign. We've all been here many times.
Okay.
If I could, Dr. Masterson, that's...
Sure.
Why don't you hold on to it?
Go ahead, Councilor Murray. Councilor Murray, go ahead.
No, I just, I'm confused. I, I'm assuming what you're saying, whether it's the mayor's budget, your budget, whoever, you, you, you're looking for $63,482,424, correct?
That's the budget that we submitted. That's the budget we submitted to the finance director.
About $4,300, which is BEP. Is that correct?
Alleged BEP.
Alleged, or whatever you...
Yeah, yes.
Whatever way you want to...
Yes.
...twist it. And the mayor's budget is 58,484.10, correct?
Right.
And that, that's what he's proposing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Plus an additional use of some fund balance. The mayor's, plus some additional use of fund balance.
You have 6.51.
You have your fund balance.
You got seven, you got, you got 7.40, roughly 7.40, 1.751, along with what we're showing in there. There's two separate lines.
Yeah, I think the fund balance portion's 6.51.
Six, that's what I just said.
And the other eight, eight ninety-six or whatever, and they total a $1,547, or what a four percent increase would be.
Total monies between them, mayor's budget, and what you're, what he's also giving you on your own budget is roughly a $1,600.
Plus the $100,000.
Well, it's in, the hundreds in there.
Yeah, $1,547, I think are totals.
Okay, and I just want to have the record clear.
All right, Dr. Masterson?
Mayor McKee, members of the town council, and citizens of Cumberland, I'm honored to stand before you on behalf of Joseph L. McCourt Middle School to share the progress made over the last two years and a glimpse of what we have planned for the future. When I arrived in McCourt last year, I was given the task of assessing the current state of the school and chart the course needed to take, to rid the school of warning status, the designation given by the Rhode Island Department of Education. During my assessment of the school, I quickly recognized the work ethic ideas and drive the faculty and staff exhibit on a daily basis. When I asked what they thought the school needed, they provided me with specific strategies, ideas, and plans based on their experience and expertise that they thought would take the school where it needed to go. I compiled those proposals put forth by the faculty and staff, studied them, and agreed wholeheartedly. We began to focus on Year Two and built a budget based on those priorities. Highlights of our implementation for this school year included a new common planning time schedule for teachers, to work strictly on curriculum, data review, and assessment construction. We also made sure that every decision we made was strategic and purposeful. With these positive changes, McCourt is now designated as a typical school shedding the warning status label. This would not be possible without the educators with whom I work with every day and the students who respond to their teaching. Now, as Year Two comes to a close, we feel that we are in a place where the foundation has been established to successfully implement the rest of the plan over the next three years. The focus of Year Three is technology. We have already installed Wi-Fi throughout the entire building, smart projectors in most rooms, and have budgeted for one-to-one Chromebooks for all students and faculty. These devices will provide students with the capability to create work that mimics the real world, publish documents, the ability to communicate with their teachers, submit work and receive feedback electronically, as well as utilize real-time, real-world resources that cannot be accessed through a textbook. We believe that the use of Chromebooks will model what happens in the world and requirements for which job creators, businesses, and trades are looking for. Today's businesses and industries state that our children are not coming out with the school prepared with 21st century skills. I'm comfortable in stating that we cannot possibly expect this if we are educating them in a way that looks like the 20th century still. Our will is technology-based, and we all know it. We need to start providing our students with the 21st century tools to assist them in developing the skills necessary to be prepared for the businesses and industries that they are craving for. We understand the burden of responsibilities entrusted to us with such a large purchase, but on behalf of our students, we accept it with open eyes and arms. Our superintendent of the school committee made the first bold and courageous step in putting a budget forward unwavering in their support to provide the middle schools with one-to-one technology. I stand before you today, asking you to make that same bold and courageous decision to support our budget request. Next school year, we, the 21st century, will be 14 years old. We cannot wait any longer to equip our students with the tools they need to be productive and responsible citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Could I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Is your school the only one using, gonna use a Chromebook?
North Cumberland Middle School.
Or is it district-wide?
It'll be a district-wide initiative between the two middle schools.
So it's just the two middle schools?
Yes.
Is it just a start, or is that the plan?
Is it getting to the high school?
All right, now, okay, we answer Mr. Thibodeau's questions. Did you hear them?
I did.
How the, what is, how is this gonna work? Not that we have anything to do it, but a member of the public has asked, so...
Yep.
Are the students gonna be taking these home?
All of our students will receive Chromebooks, and they will have full access to take them home. We cannot expect students to just use technology at school, expect them to power down when they go home. If we want students to be lifelong learners, they need to be able to learn with their equipment at the times that they need to.
Is there gonna be any, I'm not, can you explain what a Chromebook is for those that don't know?
Mr. Chandler has a visual of one, so we all have an idea of what it looks like, and then...
Is it something that accesses the internet?
Actually, if you'd like, Mr. Chandler can come and...
Sure.
And give you some...
Come on up here, so we can see on TV. You can show us first in the public. Is this a laptop computer?
It is a laptop. It, it doesn't run traditional operating systems such as...
Yeah.
OSX from a Mac or Windows. It's based on Google's version of a web-based operating system.
And what is the approximate cost of each one of these?
Roughly around 340, 360.
Okay, yeah.
With management software that would go along with that.
How do you monitor what the student is doing on the computer?
There's interface similar to what they would use with a traditional laptop, so a teacher, if it's set up in the classroom, she'd be able, he or she would be able to monitor anything that the students are working on.
Obviously, I'm not concerned about when they're in the classroom. I'm concerned about when they have it at home.
Well, with that, that same interface also has to go through our web filter, so there's a system that's set up in place that would not allow them to go to any inappropriate sites, similar to what they'd be on under the same network at the school.
So they won't be able to go on BuzzFeed. For some reason, the state website blocks that. Councilor Murray, I'll let you step in and ask a question or two. I have more questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. If you want to continue, maybe I can help.
Sure.
Question on the Chromes. They're taking these home. What is the safeguard of damage and also the children, the students losing these? Have we, is there any type of safeguard for this, or are we gonna, you know, we're putting out a lot of money, and obviously, we're dealing with some students who probably are not as responsible as others, and do we come back to the table again and say we need more money because we're gonna have to replace these?
We wouldn't be coming to ask you for all of these budget support if we were concerned that we couldn't take care of business. So if students have their Chromebooks, all the research that we have done concerning school districts that have gone one-to-one show that students carry them and take care of them as if it's the one tool that they're ever gonna get in their life. This is their connection for their learning, and all the research we've done shows the support for that. There are situations where Chromebooks do get broken or dropped. Obviously, it's, we're all human, it's not foolproof, but we do have insurance that will take care of most of those concerns. We will have a plan, foolproof, because we can't come to you every year and ask for certain budget items without proving to you that we can handle this. So we are fully have the faith that we can take care of business because we want to prove that to all of you, that your investments are coming forward to fruition, because for the, not only for our current students, but for future students. We can do for some and not others.
Okay.
So, we appreciate your question.
Do these books require internet access?
They are, so they are, as Mr. Chandler was stating, it's an internet-based computer, so you'll be, having to be connected to the internet to be able to access all the tools, although you can...
You will be, or you won't be?
You have to be connected to the internet to access all tools, but you can have some tools available to you to work offline, and then when you connect back online, all your work syncs back together. We also have a plan to work with community organizations so that our students know exactly where they can go to use these Chromebooks, fully capable with Wi-Fi. We plan on working with business partners, as well as the Boys Club, OCYL, I've been in contact with Liz Lamir, so this is gonna be a community-based effort, not just the school department.
So you've taken the steps to address those students whose houses either don't have access to the internet or don't have Wi-Fi?
Yes, and Mr. Chandler's been doing research with Cox Communications...
All right.
...to look at affordable internet usage for families that may not reach the poverty line.
Does this satisfy your questions, Mr. Thibodeau?
No.
All right. Do you mind staying? Why don't you come up while we're on the subject? And anybody else that wants to talk about the Chromebooks can come up.
Dr. Thibodeau again, Seven White Plains Drive. Nice to see everybody. My question would be, can you do eBooks on the computers, and will that save money to the district because they don't have to buy books? You can download them on those chromosomes, those Chrome...
eBooks?
Yes.
Are you planning not to order books in lieu of those?
Yes.
In terms of that, we actually had a conversation already, we're looking at...
Isn't that what the ultimate goal is? To have everything online?
In some cases, not all. The example, I'll tell you right now, is looking at grade six history.
Can you face the camera?
Grade six history would be an eBook. That's a thing we're looking at, but if someone wants to read Catcher in the Rye in 10th But if someone wants to read Catcher in the Rye in 10th grade, you still might buy the book to have the pages. I would say in textbooks, more often than not, it'd be an eBook if all possible. Maybe though a novel might be still that book you have in your hand.
My point is, it justifies the cost of buying the computers if you don't buy the textbooks that are very costly.
I don't think there's any question that there will be, first of all, your question assumes that all the textbooks are up to date. But, in the event that they are, ah, let's assume they are, this would obviously replace the cost of some of those, according to the statement that Dr. Plon-
Yeah. I can also add to that as well. When you have eBooks or e-text, it's also easier to manage for updating, because those update automatically, and typically you would sign contracts with curriculum companies. Currently, right now, curriculum companies using e-text are still on a high level, but as more competition comes forward, over the next three years, we're expecting it to take a decline, so it becomes much more affordable. Yes. But, the good thing is, is that if you live in a tech-based world, there are a lot of open-source documents and open-source types of curation that's taking place, where we have a lot of free materials available that are all trying to hook up with the Common Core.
Right. Open-source and free.
I also have a concern with all the other students in town and the middle school in that area. If you and a public school are gonna give the middle school kids the computers, what about the kids in the private school? What about the kids in the charter schools?
Well, they're run by the private individual places, so it's not really our purview to discuss that.
Well, Jim, my point is, school lunch, not school lunch, or transportation and books, right now, just somebody has to come up and complain that we factor that in.
Oh, you mean the state mandate? You're worried that there'll be a mandate, that the state will require? Okay.
It's a good point.
Your concern is noted.
It's a good point.
I think that's more of a concern of Representative McLaughlin's, but I understand what you're saying.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are my concerns, and I think it's a good idea if the eBooks are in with the program.
Councilor Kearns?
With regard to the cost of the Chromebooks, the initial purchase is what you reflect here. And with the program comes software maintenance costs, initial purchase, replacement and maintenance of that. How are you handling that cost in the budget in terms of hitting the level of effort? From this point going forward?
I'll start, and then Mr. Chandler can jump in. Essentially, one of the advantages of-
Who's his gentleman's name?
Mr. Chandler?
Chandler.
Yes.
You know how to spell it? All right, thank you. Go ahead.
One of the strong advantages we've found with the Chromebook is it is becoming a web-based system. It can be controlled through the IT department much better. So, all software upgrades are controlled in one central location, and then pushed out to all the devices. And then Mr. Chandler can talk more about the finance piece.
That might save money.
What's that?
That might save money.
Absolutely. And downtime, things like, well, a little light on the personal. Similar to everything else, but the Chrome operating system, because it is web-based, part of that purchase, when you do purchase it, there's a $30 management fee that goes along with that device. That $30 allows you to control everything that's on it, updates, restrictions, things along those lines. And with that, there's no cost other than from Google. So, if we were to look at all the additional expenses that go along with students-
Excuse me, is that, that's an enterprise license you have?
Correct, and that's given to the school-
It's not being licensed, it's free among the students you want.
Absolutely. So with that, whatever you have in the district, you can have, request additional licensing. You know, we use different licensing for different automation things that go on, and that's all free, comes from Google. With that, each student account, as well as staffing accounts, gets 30 gig, gigabits of data space. So if we were to house that internally, the internal cost that would, you know, that we'd end up incurring, you know, in budget cycles for new hardware, additional disk space, we no longer have to purchase some of those things. There are, you know, situations in labs and CAD programs and things like that where we have to allow local storage. But, the big picture, we don't have to house a larger data center any longer, because all that's housed externally at no cost to us. That answers your question.
So, in terms of resource requirements, to manage the IT aspect of this, is one person?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Only one person going to be managing the entire enterprise? The distribution of materials? Who controls the curriculum side of the IT? Not the, not the updates of the computers, but where you-
Curriculum is done through the schools. Curriculum does not fall under main, falls under the Assistant Superintendent's office?
So, that's gonna be an additional curriculum that they have to develop each year, correct?
They're, they're looking to integrate that into the classroom, bringing technology, because it's a new realm for them.
So what is the plan for the integration and the disruption of the classroom to use technology over standard teaching?
To help, your last question first, help staffing-wise. A couple of years back, we lost middle school librarians with budget cuts. In the budget in front of you now, we have budgeted one middle school, each a technology coach, a Chromebook person, to help facilitate the classroom curriculum instruction. So you have a person, a certified teacher, who has a tech background to help facilitate each middle school with that. That's how it's gonna work.
We have one of those?
We're gonna hire a community-based school. We will hire one for each middle school.
So we don't have that experience right now?
We're actually out for applications right now to see who applies. We're doing it right now.
So what if we don't get anyone that's qualified?
We will. I'm very confident we will.
So you, so you have a plan that you wanna introduce technology, but you don't have all the pieces in place? But if we buy the hardware, you don't have the other piece?
You have to start somewhere. I think we're-
Well, are you gonna buy the hardware first, or hire the person first?
I think right now, we're doing both simultaneously. We're doing it.
Is there any way to get, make sure you have the people first, before, like what is, you're not gonna use this here, I, I-
So-
This is gonna be implemented next, next year?
So, so similar to the way it has taken place in the last couple of years in Cumberland, we are on the cutting edge of education, and the one-to-one technology in Rhode Island is not taking place in very many districts. We're the ones who have studied it, and we're gonna do it right, and people wanna be a part of our program. So we're fully expecting that we're going to have quality candidates apply for our jobs. Everyone's gonna wanna jump on the Cumberland brand. So, we're excited about it, and clearly, there are a lot of people who are excited about it, from other districts trying to watch us, as usual, to see how we're leading the rest of the way.
I guess Councilor Kearns is concerned more, are there, are you familiar with whether there are individuals within the state or within the area that have the credentials you're looking for?
Yes, I do. In my former districts, I know four people right away with those expert conditions.
It's not gonna be a shortage of-
Yeah, it's not a, um-
Not a market shortage, like with, I don't know, speech pathologists. All right, thank you. You all set?
Yeah.
For now.
For now. Councilor David?
Along those lines, I had a question. How many, or which communities in Rhode Island are currently, or have been using Chromebooks?
West Warwick, Coventry, Barrington has a pilot of it, Warwick has a few thousand. So, it's, it's pretty common, and it's, it's growing ever more throughout the, you know, the United States right now.
I think that this is great, because if you look at, how many students do you know that like to read compared to how many do you like, do you know that like to use the I think this is a win-win. Thank you. Anybody else?
Just to tell me a question, will you help yourself?
Sure. Chairperson, will you?
Mr. President, can I just step to the mic for a second?
What?
If I just-
I just wanna, I, I wanna ask Mike Chandler, just to, I'm sorry.
Just, just on the top.
No.
Mike, are you? No, steer it up to the microphone.
Mike, yeah, please, if you'd be so kind. I sat through the presentation at the school committee, it was excellent, to be honest with you. But I just wanna make some general statements and help me along with this, because some people are not technology savvy, okay? So I just, just some general terms. I know you talked about web-based, and I know the difference between OS and Microsoft Platform, but I don't know that everybody does. So just, just give me a brief synopsis of that, if you would be so kind. Or give us a, yeah. I've already sat through, but I think it would benefit of the-
The Chrome operating system is, it's loosely based on a Linux, Linux or Unix operating system. Instead of, so, that could've thrown you off.
I assume everyone knows what that is. Mr. Phil.
So, so Linux and Unix, well, Linux became from, from an open-source operating system, so they've built, Google has built their operating system, Chrome and Chromium, on top of that, and they've designed their own hardware, working with manufacturers to come up with this low-cost operating system laptop. Also, you know, they're rolling out to desktop computers and tablets and things like that, so that, instead of paying the absorbent cost of some of the laptops or what they use, most people, I mean, looking at the laptops that you currently have here, you probably use maybe 10 or 15% of the resources. You may use Microsoft Office, because that's what you're used to. But with Google, you could, most people can do everything with a free open-source software that you don't have to pay licensing for.
So, so again, I'm not, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, because you're the expert, but again, it's a server as opposed, so most of the programs are gonna reside on, on the school server, and this is gonna be a turmoil, I don't wanna say some turmoil, for those of us that are-
Oh, green screens, right.
Right, exactly.
So, so some things, some things reside, they do have local storage, they have 16 gigabits of, of local storage for anything that they maybe work on, offline docs and things like that, and then everything else would reside in the cloud.
Right. So, so those parents that are gonna-
The cloud is out there.
Have the problem now, when, when you're on your computer and it says, you need an update to this program, those are things-
Those are things that go away.
-that I have to deal with.
Yep. You see a little up arrow in the right-hand corner saying that the next time you restart your computer, it will be updated?
Right.
You update it, it, you know, it, it covers virus protection, spam, things like that are all covered internally, that, those other costs go away for us.
Great, great. And just one other quick question. Life expectancy of-
Similar to a laptop, three to five years. I mean-
Have I had this one for eight?
We have, we have some too, that, you know, that are finally going away, that are 10, 11 years old, so.
That's true. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Chairperson, will you?
At least I apologize, because it means this-
No worries. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I, I can't hear folks who are at the microphone, so just, they need to speak up. So, before we get started, I'll just talk a little bit about my personal experience with the lack of books in my son's classroom. And he said to me the other day, he's a sixth-grade social studies student, so it was interesting, Dr. Thornton mentioned that that would be one of the areas where they would be going electronic. He has a test, and it was yesterday or today, and he said, "I don't have a book, I don't know how I'm gonna study this." And I know that the teacher does provide study notes and study guides, so the school's very excited, the schools, the students are really thrilled with the potential for this opportunity, and they are way more savvy with technology than we are. So, I think it's gonna work really well for the, for the middle school.
My niece has a two-year-old, well, now, now he's three, and when he was two years old, he was on one of those tablets playing video games too. Go ahead, Chairperson.
They're very savvy with that. So, I just wanna give you a little bit of background, I'm gonna take it up a little bit, and we can talk about the numbers either today or at our next meeting. But, I think it's important to understand the drive and the commitment that the school department and the school committee has had. And, we've brought about quite a number of changes that we've talked about a number of times, but as I was preparing remarks today, I had to remind myself why we were doing this. And it really, I think, when we had our leadership changes, one of the books that Dr. Thornton brought for us to read was a book called Good to Great. And if you read the book, and I'm happy to share my copy with anyone, it describes how you can take a district, or, or a business, or an organization, from the point of being okay to the point of being outstanding, and that's really where we're driving to in the district. So, who's driving this? Mike? So, I think we have to ask the question, are we good, or are we great? And, I don't know if you wanna do a show of hands, are we a good district, or are we a great district? Good?
Great.
Great? I think we're approaching great. We're somewhere in between, I think that's exactly right. We are better than we were, and we know we still have a ways to go. And, you're gonna see little bits and pieces of that, as Dr. Thornton has talked about, the Department of Ed has recognized us, as the Pro-Jo has recognized our school community changing. We recognize it as a school committee too, because every time they finish something, we move the bar. And that's our goal, to keep moving that bar for those students. Next slide. This to me is really powerful, and it's something that Jim Collins wrote about good being the enemy of great, because, in effect, we become very complacent when we're good. It's easy to be good, it's really hard to be great. We have to challenge ourselves, and we have to challenge our, our lives, our organizations to be better every day. And I, I think the council's done a lot of that with the school committee through our collaboration. It's been very challenging this year to look at countless slides and discussions about, you know, BEP and funding formula and surplus, but the reality is, kids in our community deserve to have a great school district. Ready? So, in general, some program improvements that we've had, we're working to, with Project Lead the Way, in STEM programming. Survey of the district showed that families have a very strong interest in expanding our STEM programming, so we'll be doing that at our, our school levels. We've also added additional science that's aligned, it was new a few years back, that's aligned with the expectations for the national science standards. We are taking an active approach in Common Core. We're not doing the wait-and-see approach, which some communities may be doing. We, we aren't doing that. We're aligning our programs and our coursework to that. We have greater exposure of AP courses for students, and this for me was pretty profound. In 2010, we had 79 students taking 106 AP exams, and in 2014, we have 226 students who took 376 of the AP exams. That's pretty dramatic. It's a good number, it shows, and, and what research has shown is that students who are exposed to AP classes do better in college, because they've seen that rigor, they've seen that change, they've seen that very high expectation. That's what we're trying to do within our schools. And it really required us to challenge our, our schools to say, we're not gonna gatekeep anymore, we're not gonna say, gee Lisa, you know, you're not, you're really not AP material. We wanna challenge all students to be more along the lines of that material. We've put a renewed emphasis on the arts, and we are beginning to rebuild our programs. And we'll get to a few slides in a second. As you know, we've put our full-day kindergarten program, I think it's attracted folks to our community. If you look at our elementary enrollment, well, we know Rhode Island has had a shift in its enrollment over time. In total, from 2011 to 2014, we've lost about 50 students in the elementary school. So, in spite of the fact that it seems like it's, might be dramatic, it's really not that significant of a number, and we hope we will continue in increasing our enrollment in that area. And then lastly, you heard about the one-to-one technology initiative. If you do have interest, I, I do believe the video of that is on the school department website, so it's a good thing to see. We did have some students test drive the software, and what you saw was the teacher actively working on her computer while the student was working on a piece of material, and they could interact, she could ask questions on demand of the student, remember to do this, don't forget about that, so they could work very interactively. You didn't have to wait for the paper to come back with all the, the red line all over it, you actually could do it very interactively. Cool. So, this was, this is all student work, and this is pretty amazing, and I have like a bazillion little slides of this, but the high school has really, really taken on the effort to get engaged with the community, and it, you know, for school committee members, and many of you council members have been in attendance, as well as the mayor, there's a lot of stuff going on. They had an art showcase at the high school, and kids had pencil drawings, they had sculptures, they've been doing photography. I'm kinda hoping that's not me underneath that little rock right there, about to fall on my head.
That could be me with the earmuffs.
That could be me with the earmuffs, or me with the, the little mouse ears right there. But also, the, the clef singers and the chorus have new, new leadership, and Sue Alves, who was the former director of the chorus, left very big shoes with probably very small feet, but a huge, huge job for our Janita Ducharme, to do magnificent things. I think also, if you listen, there's a new band director, and they really refocused the music, and there's, I think, some excerpts of that that are available that we can share with you. He's really changed it up, and it's nice to see that. I think the students, if you went to the all-band concert, are very proud of the work that they've done, and if you spoke to the students afterwards, their remarks were, that they've done, and if you spoke to the students afterwards, their remarks were, "We had to really challenge ourselves at that." And at the end, when it was over, you know, big smiles on their faces, they had, they, they worked hard and they did it. So, I think you're seeing, you know, our school rebuilding and becoming more engaged and energetic. All right, Mike? So, I'm just gonna go back to some of the discussions that we've had during our BEP discussion, and what we were talking a lot about was, are we equitable, are we adequate, and are we fair? And while we know we're doing good things with our school programs, the struggle that we have as a school community is that we don't believe we have the resources to be equitable, fair, and adequate. And that's a challenge for us, and that's where we need to continue to work on collaboration, and really having a better understanding of what our budget is all about. So as we had a healthcare, we always have a healthcare line item in our budget, that was basically cost, cost-neutral this year, very small increases, and over time, it's been very small, because we've either negotiated savings into that, our claims have been a little bit lower, we've worked with the mayor's office on Plan sixty-five, and, and moving more individuals to Plan sixty-five. So for us, all of those savings help us to build a better program. While they may appear as surplus, often they're cost savings that are driven out of contracts that we've negotiated as well. Yeah, we need better, great vocabulary, we need to be outstanding, we need to be competitive, and our vocabulary needs to include profound change for our students. That's what we want for them. All right. So this is some cool stuff, lacrosse team, near and dear to my heart. I miss most of my son's games, and I miss the scholarship night tonight, unfortunately, but that's how it goes. This is history fair at the middle school. One boy had an interest in the Stanley Cup, and two young gentlemen are, um, looking at the history of fishing, which was, they were very engaged and really interested in talking with us more about it. You can see up on the left-hand side, that's the art showcase, and I apologize for the quality of it, but packed house, every seat taken in the auditorium, and really an opportunity for Cumberland to shine. Ready? This one was neat. This is the senior oratorical, and it's something that a really wonderful principal, Tenaro, has started with, um, some of his faculty. They had six students, um, and it was Amanda LaToile, who's one of the interdisciplinary coordinators. She, um, she pulled this together. What they had is freshman and senior students, the entire class there. Six students got up to share something about their experiences at Cumberland High, so for kids who are graduating, they get to feel that, "Wow, I didn't know how hard you struggled in school. I didn't know that that meant so much to you in school." But for the freshman class, as those kids are leaving, they know, "You know what? I'm struggling right now, too, and to see that you have moved on and have been successful was a great thing." This is Eli Diaz, and he gave a really remarkable speech. If you have the chance to attend it next year, it, it does fall into that category of profound-
Where is this?
This is at the Wellness Center.
Looks different.
I don't know. And we did ask them to tape it for next year. We have to talk about the town appropriations, because when the increase of cost per students in the district amounts to thirty-five dollars, we have a long way to go. We have to work harder to drive cost savings, to provide allocation of resources to the schools, so that we can continue to make these leaps and bounds that we're trying to make. We've seen this slide a lot, but I think it's worth revisiting. The biggest change is in the other commitments, and it's in the non-educational piece of our budget. It's not in teacher salaries, that's increased by about five percent over, over the period of time. It really is in those other commitments that we are absolutely challenged with, that we need to work with you to remedy the need to provide more money for instruction and instructional support. And that number continues to grow, it's not going down. Pension costs and other, other areas, we do have a, a strong need to not continue to have local monies go to that other commitments. So how do we be great? And this goes back to Jim Collins. So it doesn't matter how bleak the situation, or how stultifying the mediocrity, they all maintained unwavering faith that they would not just survive, but prevail as a great company. And yet, at the same time, they became relentlessly disciplined at confronting the most brutal facts of their current reality. And I think that that's what we need to continue to do. We need to be, we need to confront our brutal facts, we need to have a strong understanding so that you do understand our pension changes, our teacher salary changes, our healthcare changes, Chromebooks, all of that, you, you need to be able to make an informed decision, and it's our goal to continue to share that discussion with you. That's how to be great. Ready? So what are our brutal facts that we're aware of? Non-instructional costs are consuming our local increases. Ongoing concerns that local appropriation is insufficient to support the BEP. Collaboration must be ongoing and continuous. It's really hard to do that. We all have lives, we all are busy, we all don't wanna talk about certain aspects of this, but we have to. We need a long-range funding plan to support the dual-district situation, and this issue will not fix itself, it's not going to go away, we have to address this. We need to commit relentless discipline at confronting the most brutal facts of their current reality. Without it, we don't see the success. We saw the stagnation of, of previous years where we struggled, we cut, we demolished, we changed, but we didn't change for all the right reasons, and now we are, we are driving toward that. So, as many of you were present the other day, these are the distinguished scholars, and they're attending, they're planning to attend some outstanding schools next year. We need more distinguished scholars. We, we need to drive greater success for all of our students, and so I think this is why we're doing that. And that's the big long law that you've all seen a bunch of times, but I felt needed to be recorded in there, 'cause I do think it is the core of our problem. And I think we're finished, so if you have any questions for me?
House of Curbs. Thank you for the presentation.
Um, one of the questions I have, and we refer to it often, was, what do you, the three, the resource issue, what were the top three resources you think you need to be successful? Not in terms of dollars, but in terms of named resources.
Yeah, and, and I think that's a great question, because it really isn't in terms of dollars, and it really is about the conversation that our community needs to have about, what do you need? I'm gonna defer to Dr. Thornton for that, because we have talked about it at great length.
Actually, I'll line it, and I have a bridge version, like, put it in categories for you.
If you want the public to hear you, you have to be a-
We actually outlined it, and the first big one would be staffing. We have a lot of staffing shortcomings in Cumberland. An example would be Dr. Masses, and a principal of a middle school, oftentimes answering a phone as opposed to being in a classroom, 'cause we're short on clerks. So staffing would be an area, um, to me, in terms of that, programming, um, programs. Cumberland High School had a TV telecommunications program back around two thousand and three, it was closed, locked up, sold all the equipment, so I think program, staffing, programming are the big two.
Programming, did you expand that then?
Sure. Lots of successful school districts have programming pathways. For example, we're starting the STEM program at the high school, engineering, TV telecommunications, uh, we have down here computers.
So do you have options for the students to, who raise themselves? High school elective type programs?
Sure, the high school currently has a great pathway for criminal justice through Roger Williams, that's one great pathway. Many high schools have robust computer pathways, so we would have, you know, high school juniors fixing Chromebooks at the middle school. I came from a district years ago in Exeter, West Greenwich, they had Cisco A-plus computers, a pathway for computer program. We don't have that in Cumberland, that's a great pathway I would wanna see. So in terms of the big two so far, we have programming, and we have staffing, the last one's materials. We often do without, I mention textbooks a lot to you every year, I usually wave textbooks at you. We started off my first year with forty-eight textbooks before the two thousand, and had to report, we're down to thirty-six. So we're making, chipping away at it, if you will, so, materials, number three.
Yeah, thanks. Another question I have is, you talk about the erosion of educational dollars with the non-BEP issues. Do you have the comparison? You seem to have compared apples to apples and apples to oranges, a whole bunch of points in terms of cost and revenues, but do you have that laid out in terms of how are other districts dealing with that shortfall? Are they also increasing, and if they are, what's offsetting it for them? Because you seem to point to that as a constraint to your success, to be great, so how, how are you addressing that in terms of collaboration with other districts to never understand it? Are we doing or not doing something to lower that cost?
So I'll start with, Dr. Thornton has more to add, by all means. So we do look at the UCOA data to see the comparison. One of the areas that we have worked to consolidate costs is in our OPEB. So for retirees, we know that that number went from a half a million dollars a few years ago, and it's virtually zero. We also know that we have contained special education costs over the years, and it varies, because we know we have different kids coming into the district, but we did see a reduction, and I think it was in fiscal thirteen, of a significant amount of money, so we are trying to do that. But as far as apples to apples, it is a challenge for us to do that, to compare one-for-one, because some, um, retirees have healthcare that's guaranteed, that they don't purchase. So their costs may appear to be larger. If you look at the five categories that UCOA breaks down to, if you combine instruction and instructional spending, we are the last district. If you look at leadership, which is one of the other ones-
I have your charts on that.
We are one of the lowest. So we are, we are trying to be efficient, we are reaching out with, um, other school communities, there's, um-
But being the lowest is, is a statement. Um, how, how do you try to rectify that? I mean, we know we have sunk costs. We have more sunk costs than most other districts, and that's why we're last?
Did you say sunk?
Sunk. In other words, we owe that pension money every year, that two million eighty-six thousand, whatever it is, right?
Yes.
Um, there's nothing you can do about that. And I stated to you in a prior meeting when we were talking about BEP, that for us to overcome these odds, we need a big idea. It's, we can't think about this in a traditional sense, we have to think about it in terms of collaboration and sharing expenses, or whatever to offset that. So I'm just wondering, you've done anything in that area?
So, I think, a couple things come to mind first, in terms of, uh, science, Kait Science, we're with Gemsnet from URI, it's a collaboration with, I think, twelve districts now, so working together for Kait Science. Currently Bob Mitchell, our assistant soup, is working with, I believe, um, Fostick, Lost Heart, and Boerville on, um, high school history. So we are doing a lot of teaming in terms of curriculum and learning right now. In terms of, well, I haven't, I had, you mentioned sunk costs. I think the biggest thing Cumberland has to overcome is, we just historically have been underfunded in, in things like materials and staffing. So until you overcome that, you really can't get ahead of, that's the challenge right now. Each year, we keep it in progress, but it's really, really slow when we're kind of also bleeding out the other costs. That's the challenge right now, trying to overcome the hole in the boat, if you will.
Well, I would like to see the projected cost, 'cause we know that numbers are gonna change. The only thing that changes it is debt, and it's, it's, it articulates a little bit because you have people retiring every year and going into it, and people passing away and coming off it, and then you have the spousal offset, and, you know, I know that cycle. So I see that numbers constantly going up. So we need a plan that can combat that and offset it to the point where we can add to the educational side of it, either lower the cost of education-
Right.
-and have options for students, as you, you mentioned here in your top three. I mean, just-
Yeah, in terms of OPEB, though, if I'm correct, I think the OPEB number is zero next year for the school department, so we have to overcome that.
So we're at a start of here?
We are at zero.
And it, and it won't, it won't return, so we've, we've changed the, the pathway for retirees, so that we no longer encumber that expense. So we, we are trying to do our diligence, and, and often it's, um, having been around the block a couple of times now, there are negotiations that we've made that I think have realized significant savings to the district that have allowed us to repurpose those funds, and a lot of it has been in healthcare or wage freezes, and we continue to explore other options. They're not gonna swallow the whole, not at once, and I think it is, it is a negotiation, and we've been successful with that. So we would continue to negotiate our contracts. We know Rhode Island Association of School Committees is looking to, uh, kind of restart some discussions about collaboration of resources through other school communities, and they'll be providing us with, um, sort of shared services contracts. Um, some communities do share resources like tractors and things like that, that we could be part of. It's, it's somewhat small in scope, we're hoping to broaden that conversation to more of a regional discussion, just so that we can have our, our facts. Because often we've heard, we should really only have one superintendent in the entire state, and that may be true, but I think it's important for school committees right now to look at those numbers to, to say, "Yeah, that's feasible," or, "It should be regional," or, "As we evolve, we should evolve this way."
The, the politics matters. It's thicker than we can imagine, or we'd throw at this time. Um, but realistically, there are some things that you do have in your control, like negotiation is one.
Mm-hmm.
Other benchmarking activities, where other successful districts in the country do. You know, you have to kind of sort through that to find the good, because it's hard to compare Cumberland to any other district.
Yeah.
We have our own unique issues.
And we've tried to pioneer some activities with curriculum and vacation changes, and we're always the first go-for-out of the hole. And other communities then start to ask us, "What do you think about your school vacations? What do you think about, you've got other communities in East Greenwich now talking about changing the start time of the high school." We absolutely agree with that, we think it's a magnificent idea, but right now, it's cost prohibitive. So if anyone has ever tried to blow their high school student out of a, out of bed at six o'clock in the morning, you practically need to use a stick of dynamite to get them there on time. To change that time to be more in sync with their body, um, has proven results for student performance.
Especially in model that, uh, students would gain around nine points immediately in terms of student achievement. The cost to run the middles and the high together at fifteen, around four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars.
So, why?
Bus.
The, but, we've currently have five bus tiers, you'd be changing the bus tiers.
Yeah.
If we fleet of buses, X number of buses.
So taking that, there's also studies that show that the more classroom time a student has, the more learning they get, the better scores we get. So if we get in at eight o'clock instead of seven o'clock, and we extend the, the school day, possibly we could address resourcing issues to cover the extra time in a different way. When I talk about big ideas, that's the kinds of things I'm talking about.
We actually had looked at that in terms of, um, having elective for students prior to eight fifteen start time. Some of the folks might take Visette first, and they wanna get the body going, and, uh, having the flex staffing issue, or model, if you will. With that.
That was a cost. That, that was an incurred cost for the district.
So if you have any questions on the budget detail, we also have, I'm Mr. Prignato here, which we can certainly delve into any aspects of the budget you want, we can also come back on-
We don't deal with the detail. You spent the money we gave you, we don't deal with the detail, that's your job.
Ms. President?
House of Smith.
Just a question for you before you go. Uh, Ms. Berry, you strive to be great, can you tell me who the greatest high school, the greatest school district in Rhode Island is?
Alex, you're blocking the camera.
In your opinion?
Barrington.
Not your opinion, our opinion.
I think that's a great question. I think it would have to profile, be similarly profiled to Cumberland, because when you don't have the, um, the SES considerations that our community has, we know that, that's, that is something that we struggle with. I, I would put it between North Kingstown and, and South Kingstown, from, from my perspective as, as a community base. For results, there's very high demand in East Greenwich and in Barrington. And, and I, I think the activities that we're doing at the high school and the middle school are beginning to change that. So as we removed the, the walls for AP courses, kids now have that opportunity. Are they gonna struggle in the beginning? Yeah. But if we can back that up so that we know with a stellar little seventh grader in math, that by the time he hits ninth grade, and he's a little history buff or a math kid, that there's going to be pathways and programs for him, and what we've realized with some of the pathway courses, is that students do, ultimately do better, um, with the, um, the one that we're partnering with, with WPL.
I just wanted to know what you thought of, so it's North Kingstown, South Kingstown, or Denny's College? All right, same question to you, Dr. Thornton, how is it different way?
Yeah.
Uh, if you had two sixth graders, you, you could move to any town in the state, where would you move?
Any town in the state of Rhode, any town in Rhode Island.
Yeah. Where would you put him in school?
Where'd I put him to school? I'd put him in Cumberland, 'cause I'm gonna make this, the, the Cumberland district the best district, so I think-
Thank you.
Honest answer. I think the, the, the last question is to follow up, but she was saying, I think it's kind of a little question in terms of who's the best. It's kind of like a running race, everyone's not starting at the same starting line. The students coming in, their own materials, different location, right, uh, different challenges, some towns have less challenges than others, so it depends what they overcome to get to the finish line, so you can't, every town's not starting at the same- So you can't, every town's not starting at the same-
Demographics is different.
Demographics matter a great deal.
And, and that was part of our motivation for full day kindergarten. You knew kids who were coming in well-prepared, reading, knew their, you know, their math facts, and they knew how to write their name, and they knew their alphabet. And then there were some kids who did not have any of those skills at all. That helps us to bring, that, raise that bar for them early on.
Because they didn't go to preschool.
And we found more students, fewer students were attending preschool when the economy took a dip, which created a greater challenge for the kindergarten teachers.
Yeah. Of course.
Cost of Murray. I don't have a question, I have a comment, and it's directed really to Dr. Matheson and also to Mrs. Coughlin in the middle schools. I've had the opportunity to be invited to both schools a few times, and I think it speaks for itself that, what I generally get out of that, that there is no excuses accepted in what they do. They go at it, and I, I, I use them as the leader, but it's also the teachers behind them. I was totally amazed watching the progress and listening, especially to Dr. Matheson one time, we spent some time as to what he's accomplished with little. Now, that's a problem we have here with the council. It's really a money problem. It's not we against you, or you against us, whatever the case is. It's a case of the money and how we have to look at the other taxpayers, obviously. But I think that one of the critical movements that I've seen in the school systems, and I have all my children go through the schools, that we're not looking for excuses anymore. And I compliment both you and, at least in the middle schools that I know, even the elementary schools, go to BF Norton, go to Cumberland Hill. It's been amazing, and, and I think that's one of the, the driving factors now, is to, again, not look for excuses, but to find a way to get things done, to become. Because I remember when my children went to school, we were the number, maybe number two, maybe three, possibly one, back in the eighties, and they obviously, it was a great school system. And I've always said that to maintain a great school system, the taxpayers' property values are going to go up. So I compliment both the teachers and the, the principals of the, of these schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coste, Murray, and Senator. Does anyone else wish to speak on the school department budget?
We have one more slide.
Thank you.
What?
We have one more slide.
Where is that?
It's a picture of my, the island I bought and I live on. You're all invited.
What? I don't understand sign language, Mr. Lee. Please? We've seen that one.
That, that was the slide. Thank you.
Can you bring it bigger?
Yeah, but you can't see it. There it is. There it is. One of the things we, that was talked about the other night by Cosman Lambie, and I think you brought it up a little bit tonight, was the fund balance situation, and why, why it's not coming out of the school department's fund balance rather than the mayor's proposed taking out of the town's fund balance. So you can see the difference in fund balance amounts. If you compare the second line, the $1,655,343, the undesignated fund balance of the school department, the, the other $1,004 is designated for specific purpose, capital items, educational supplies. One of the things we do is when edu, if, if a principal doesn't spend all of his educational supply budget, we try to reserve that and designate it for future educational supplies rather than, you know, it keeps people, encourages them not to just spend it at the end of the year hoping they might not get this money again type of thing. But the $1,655 is 2.83% of our budget, of our proposed budget this year. That represents 10 days of bills that we could pay at that total budget. So I would think if you had only 10 days of reserves in your checking account, you wouldn't feel that you were in a really strong position. The school funding formula that's in year four this year, that's not, there's no law that guarantees that. The state is attempting to do that. We see all the time reductions of state revenues, gambling in Massachusetts, what that might want to do. If the state funding formula is slowed down or whatever, the school department needs some reserves to fall back on. Like I said, that's 10 days of reserves. Where the town surplus is, if you go to the $8,449, it represents 28% of the town budget, represents 12% of the town and school budgets if you take state aid out. So the town is much, in a much better position fund balance-wise to handle the $600,000 than the school department is. We would, ultimately, we would hope that you would budget the $651,000 as a, in fund balance as a revenue, and increase the school department line item to the full $547,000 so there wouldn't be any question on maintenance of effort, so that the message that the technology and the Chromebooks and stuff like that isn't a one-year thing, and maybe next year we can't do it, and, you know, some students will have them and some students won't. You know, if, if, there, there still would be no impact on tax increases already or that sort of stuff if you, if you just handle the fund balance treatment and the budget differently. That's all. Why don't you see that slide?
Thank you. It's almost, there's a couple, I mean, I think we need a break, a couple of us need a break. I don't know how many want to speak on the school budget. Mr. DeCamey, Mr. Representative McLaughlin. All right, we'll do, we'll stay here, listen to you guys. Go ahead. Come on up. Age before beauty.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the town council, I, I'd just like to, I don't want to sound redundant, but I'm, I'm actually excited, you know, on the Chrome tablets. I see in H E W, there's a problem in our elementary schools, okay? One, language barriers, you know, and, you know, different sections, but I would ask you to fully support, you know, these Chrome tablets. It's, the innovation is there, the technology is there, and we owe this to the children of, you know, our, our community. I would ask, however, as far as the software goes, in reference to the, the software, reading, languages, different language, is that incorporated in the-
We're working on the EASL.
Okay. Another thing is the spare units, in case they get dropped. You don't want any child, you know, left, left behind on these. And in multitude in savings, there was a question raised here tonight in reference to private schools and stuff like that. Well, you know, believe it or not, the private schools, it's my understanding the state provides, you know, two textbooks, I believe it's math and science, but for the, in secondary education-
No, they have to provide all the textbooks that the private school is using. The school department, that's a mandate.
Oh, that's a mandate, that's only in elementary. I know in secondary education, like Muncie Childs and so on and so forth, I, I've actually known of students, they, they have a, a book sale, and the, you know, children from the private schools purchase, you know, these books in second, secondary education, but please, these tablets are a great concept. My wife bought me, and she released me from the computer, she bought me a tablet for Christmas, and like, for those of you that don't have it, it kind of frees you up, you can, you know, it's a new toy. Anyways, I'm excited. Thank you.
Good for you, there's a lot of people that I know that can't even turn a computer on.
Mr. President, good question.
House floor currents.
The Chromebooks, are you going to give the students protective cover for it? Have you brought that?
Yes. That's probably within that same number.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. DeCamey.
Just a quick question, you have a comment on budget, a comment on books, what do we-
Well, anything, really, it's, we're at the end, so. I'll read the, general fund budget is currently $86,394,34. Proposed is $88,324,56. Go ahead.
Okay, I want to comment first on the school books, on the, on the Chromebooks.
Yeah.
My kids, I no longer have children in this district, they don't come, they go to college. So I'm kind of, thank God, through the fine Cumberland school department. As far as the Chromebooks go, I don't have a problem with that. What I do have a problem is, is the, is the budget, the total budget for the school department. I'm not sure which is being presented to the council right now. I have the feeling it's the $63 million.
What's being presented is $58 million-
Okay.
-for 84.
Why?
The 63, is that true, the $4 million?
Yep.
Oh, all right. So the mayor has reflected the request in the budget as the department request, okay? Just so we clarify that. You did help with that, thank you.
This is, this is, I, I know the school department, well, the school committee wants $63 million.
That's what-
$400,000, correct?
That's what they submitted.
That's what they submitted. That is with $4 million on top of what they're getting now. I believe-
You have the cap.
Which, which is illegal. Number one. Number two, the $58 million, I believe, is fear. I've come to a couple of council meetings before, the last council meeting that I believe I attended, the school department wanted 1.5 or 1.7 million dollars. I believe that was last year or the year before. I'm not quite sure about-
We increased the school budget over the mayor's budget.
Okay, at 1.0, okay, 1.5 or 1.7 million.
I don't remember the numbers.
So that is on the taxpayers' now, and going forward.
Anything on the actual budget of the school department is in maintenance of effort.
Okay. My, my-
So the books and the textbooks, the Chromebooks and the textbooks are not?
That, okay, and that would not, that would not create a tax increase, correct?
That's what the mayor's saying, and Mr. Sylvia, we don't actually do this levy until next May.
My feelings-
This would be the first budget that I can remember in 10 years that there was no tax increase at all.
Correct, because I've been in this town for 22.
Right.
And every year it's gone up.
But, to be fair, I don't remember a tax increase higher than 3.5%.
3%?
Yeah.
Okay.
And when you look around to other communities, you're looking at 8%, 10%, 15%.
And with all due respect, Mr. President, I'm in Cumberland, I don't care about anything else.
No, but you work in another community.
Oh, I certainly do. And I know the troubles that school departments have, town council have, the mayor has, I'm fully aware of that.
Right.
I have been at odds with a couple of members on this council a couple of times for money that was being put out. I find myself, and I said this before the meeting, that I'm in Mr. Lambie's, in the mayor's corners as far as, let's give them the books with no, no tax increase. Thanks.
Mr. Libero? Second time? Third time?
Yeah, I really wanted to talk, address the, the underfunding with the BEP that was stated in the Valley Breeze, the $4 million gap, it's, we're underfunded, we're underfunded. How many people have read the basic education, 45, 40 pages? I mean, school committees all has it. Anybody read the basic education plan, program?
We're quite familiar with it.
All right. It, it's to determine whether equality of education-
Mr. Krieger, at this Department of Ed says we're not out of compliance, so.
Yeah. Well, the whole point-
We haven't really focused on that tonight, and it's out there, and it's, but I'm, I'm actually quite pleased because, you know, there's been a lot of focus on it, and I think the focus should really be on the subject matter, I guess, of the, the whole district, and what can be done, what can we do as a council?
Point I'm trying to make is, the basic education program is a, it says it right in it, it is not required that every school offer every service detailed in the BEP, says it right in it. Now, as far as-
Who are you referring to?
I'm referring to Title G, the basic education program.
What section?
G, Title G, chapter, chapter 12.
Title G, what is that? Department of Ed regulations?
This is the basic education program that McWalters put out, 2009. Anyway, let me get off that. The ability to pay in Cumberland, when I was on the school committee, I was always the bridge between, and you know, between the taxpayers and the schools. I tried to see what everybody could afford. I was astounded by the 2010 census that the, the average person, what they make per capital income in Cumberland is only $25,000. It's kind of like crazy, you know, with the 295, with the 80% of the people there, and the other side, the 80% of the taxes. $25,000. The family income is $63,000, and the median household is 54.
The person making $25,000 isn't going to be owning real estate.
I'm just telling you-
Yeah.
Average, the census. And I'm telling you, the median household income is $54,000, and the median family is 63. You have to take that into consideration when you're doing these budgets, that's all.
Absolutely.
That's all.
Thank you.
That's my two cents worth.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on the school budget or the budget at all? The Department of-
Mr. President, I just want to make a-
At 10:50 PM. We're going to take a two-minute recess.
Okay.